Okay, welcome to the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. We will call the meeting to order and we'll call on Commissioner Schaefer to lead us in prayer and then Commissioner Black will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
It seems in our world, in this day and age, that something's always happening. We have girls that are kidnapped in Nigeria, we have shootings, deaths, homicides in our own streets here at home, wars in Ukraine to go along with Afghanistan, et cetera. And a lot of times, it's different faces that are in disagreement with each other. And from all this, a lot of people have fear. And I would just like to share with you tonight, as a prayer, some examples of fear and faith. Fear imprisons while faith liberates. Fear paralyzes, faith empowers. Fear disenheartens, faith encourages. Fear sickens, faith heals. Fear makes us useless, faith makes us serviceable. Fear puts hopelessness at the heart of life while faith rejoices in its guide. Dear Father, we just ask you to take our fears and inhibitions in all our lives and give us the faith to be just and truthful in your eyes. Dear Lord, we just lift up all our military servicemen and women, all the students in Rutherford County, the 2,700 approximately that are graduating here in a couple of weeks. We just ask you to be with them and give them faith and wisdom and guidance of your Spirit for their lives. Give us, Lord, the grace to work for what we ask for in your eyes. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Soreño.
Here.
Twenty-one present.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight, we have, now, our first, we have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed those minutes and I make a motion that we approve as written.
Right, and a second from Phillips. Does anyone have any corrections or additions? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, tonight, we have three resolutions, recognizing some distinguished groups from Blackman High School, our cheerleading squad there, our boys' basketball team and our girls' basketball team. And Commissioner Trey Gooch is going to present these resolutions of recognition. And the first one is for the cheerleading group, so we'd like for each of you that are members of that team or your coaches or to come on far and sort of stand up here with us in the front so we can see you and so the people that are viewing this on television can see you as well, so.
While they're making it up here, Mr. Chair, as you notice on your agenda, there's many great things going on in Blackman. And since I'm not running for county office, I can honestly say that Blackman is the best.[282.12][282.12](Laughter). And wouldn't you agree, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely, they're the best.
And where's Gail Vick? I want to make sure she's up here.
You might even tell them that I was born in Blackman, Tennessee, and lived there as a kid.[294.77][294.77](Laughter). Okay, so.
This is three years' worth, I believe. Mr. Chairman, whereas the 2014 Blackman High School Cheerleading Squad recently won the T double S double A state championship and went on to win the National High School Cheerleading Championship in Orlando, Florida, and whereas this is the third national championship in four years, and whereas this has been an exciting and successful season, and special commendation is due to all squad members, Coach Heather Wortman and Courtney Gregory and Principal Gail Vick for their dedication and commitment which made this championship possible and bringing this fine publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2014 Blackman High School Cheerleading Squad, Coach Heather Wortman and Courtney Gregory and Principal Vick for their successful year. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And a second from everyone in the audience, including, I heard, Mr. Farley. All of you in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. And would the coach like to say anything to our group here? Either one of you, say a few words. They deserve it.[420.31][420.31](Laughter).
They obviously excel outside the classroom, but not only do they excel outside the classroom, they also are very dedicated in their school and their community with lots of community service and then with school spirit as well. So, they do a great job in both places, so they're very well deserving of this honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[442.12][442.12](Applause).
And at this time, I would like to invite the Blackman High School Boys Basketball Team and their coach.
Let him stand right near him with that trophy so they can see that.
I'm gonna need a, I've been looking up here. Mr. Chairman, whereas recently the Blackman High School Boys Basketball Team won the District VII AAA championship and the T double S double A state boys' basketball championship, and where they are the first Rutherford County school to win the boys' state championship in almost 50 years, and whereas this has been an exciting and successful season, and special commendation is due to all team members, Coach Barry Wortman, who was named the Tennessee Boys Basketball Coach of the Year, and Principal Gail Vick for their dedication and commitment which made this championship possible and for bringing this fine publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2014 Blackman High School Boys Basketball Team, Coach Barry Wortman and Principal Vick for their successful year. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And a second from Mr. McAdoo and others out there. I'm sure all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.[579.12][579.12](Applause).
Board, thank you very much for having us on behalf of our young men here today. We just appreciate the opportunity to come in here. We've got four seniors that are gonna graduate next Tuesday and the rest of our young men who represent our school extremely well, on and off the floor, and just a great group of guys, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you very, very much.
And now, I would like to invite the 2014 Blackman High School Girls Basketball Team and their coach.
Our girls have a mean coach that won't give them the day off of practice.[656.55][656.55](Laughter). They were at 5:30, we left and they were still in the gym shooting, that's why our young ladies aren't here today.
Is that why they got so many national championships?
Well, we hope that's right.
Okay, cool. So, are these for me, or?
We'll share them with you.
I'll touch them.
We'll share them with you, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, whereas recently the Blackman High School Girls Basketball Team won the District VII AAA championship, the Regional IV AAA championship, and the T double S double A state girls' basketball championship, and whereas they ranked number one in USA Today Super 25 Girls Basketball, ranked number one in the MaxPreps Excellent Top 25 Girls Basketball, and ranked number one in the ESPNW Power Ranking for Girls Basketball, and whereas they are the first Rutherford County school to be ranked number one in all three national polls, whereas this has been an exciting and successful season, and special commendation is due to all team members, Coach Chad Hibden, who was named the USA Today National High School Girls Basketball Coach of the Year, and the Tennessee Girls Basketball Coach of the Year, and Principal Gail Vick for their dedication and commitment which made this championship possible and for bringing this fine publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2014 Blackman High School Girls Basketball Team, Coach Chad Hibden and Principal Vick for their successful year. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Jeff Jordan and others. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good, congratulations.[763.99][763.99](Applause).
Like I said, our girls are in the gym and we had spring practice today, but on behalf of them and our coaches, other coaches that aren't here, we're humbled for you guys to honor not only us but our other athletes at our school. And I think the common theme is Ms. Vick here, as she has set forth such great leadership for us that it's easy for our coaches to follow her lead and present to our athletes the right way to do things, and so I think we really need to give her a big honor and say thank you to her.[807.79][807.79](Applause).
I appreciate getting to hold that trophy. That's the first trophy I've held since I got a trophy for Little League for just showing up.[829.82][829.82](Laughter). But most of you may know that Ms. Gail Vick is retiring after 39 years of serving our kids. And I asked her, because she just rounded up and worked one more year and retired after 40, and she says she doesn't do math.[844.92][844.92](Laughter). Congratulations. We love you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks for having us.[850.92][850.92](Applause).
Well, you may have set a record, Ms. Vick, that will never be broken. One high school with two national honors and the other team with the state championship, so that is absolutely remarkable, and it does, it is a testimony to your great leadership, and we just really, really appreciate it, and thank you for 39 years of wonderful service of developing young men and women into those particular areas that will prepare them for their future life, and we just really want to say thank you very, very much. Okay, thank you. Next, we're ready for public comments, and tonight, we have two public comments. One is a person that would, some of you already know, but some of which is an important person that, in that this person is the Executive Director of the Tennessee County Commission Association, and he just wanted to come and share some thoughts with you and introduce himself, and I'm sure he's going to say he's willing to help you in any way he possibly can for any of those difficulties or issues that we may be facing. So, Mr. Charles Curtis is our first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, I took the liberty to go around and left my car at everyone's workstation except yours. I set a goal that I would go to every county commission. Talking about the principal doing math earlier, it's gonna take me almost three years. There's 42 counties meet on a third Monday night. There's only 12 Monday nights in a year. Thank God, there's a few of them meet in the middle of the day, but it's gonna take me almost 36 months. But I've got a warm place in my heart for Rutherford County. I'm a brick mason by trade, and I work my apprenticeship out in this county. The company I work with, we brick nearly every house that was in Northridge subdivision back in the 60s. When I left for the Marine Corps during the Vietnam War, I was working for Parsley Brothers out here at MTSU on a married dorm, and I learned how to make a living here. And I love this county. I love my home county, and that's where I'm staying. But if I had to have a second home, it'd be in Rutherford County. The main reason I come tonight is to tell you who I am. I'm not some prima donna stuck down in a room somewhere. I'm a county commissioner at heart, always have been. I served four years as a fire chief at home, which Gary's aware of that. Then I was served on a county commission, and I served as a county executive. In 94, I was elected to Tennessee General Assembly and was elected to 10 terms. January 1st, I took over the reins as a County Commissioners Association. I actually worked for you. The card I gave you's got all my phone numbers. It's got my home phone, my cell number, and my work number. I encourage you to call me if you've got anything, any questions, anything I might help you with. I'm not gonna stand up here and claim that I know all the answers, but I know where the resources are at. What I don't know, I know where to go get it. And if I don't know, I'll tell you I don't know. I'm not gonna feed you a line. If you call and ask me something personally, it'll stay between you and I. I'm not gonna call somebody else and guess what Gary called and asked me last night. If I don't do that, it'll stay between you and I. Now, if you wanna call me at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, it's not gonna make me mad, but my wife's gonna be mad for days.[1073.58][1073.58](Laughter). I just want to tell you that. But I encourage you to call me. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. You're blessed. This county's blessed in so many ways. I was watching these students come up here, and I listened to the prayer tonight. But this county is extremely blessed, and you all should consider it a privilege to serve on this county commission. Not very many counties in this state's dealing with almost a half a billion dollar budget. You've got quite a responsibility doing the job that you do, but one of the things, this county's got good leadership, and it's had good leadership in the past. I served almost 20 years in legislature, and probably the best man I served with was John Bragg. He come out of this county. He was a hero to me. And I love Tommy, too. I love his son, too. He's a great leader.[1122.58][1122.58](Music). I'm gonna give you a couple things, and then I'll shut up. I've learned over my 67 years, one of the most important things I ever read outside the Bible is a real short statement, says, "Speak well of your enemies; you made 'em." Now, think about what I just said, "Speak well of your enemies; you made 'em." You may not started it, you may not caused it, but you can handle it a little bit different and salvage the situation. And the last thing I'm gonna say is, if you have to twist or turn the truth to get what you want, God's not in it. If you have to twist or turn the truth to get what you want, God's not in it. I want what God wants for me, not what I want. I hope and pray you got something out of what I said in these last two statements, but I look forward to working with you, and if I can ever do anything to help you, I'd be honored to. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Look forward to working with you. Mr. Farley.
I'm gonna say this about Charlie. I'm not gonna be up here on the next county commission, but I'll tell you what, Charlie Curtis is exactly what you just seen right there. I vouch for that man 100%, and he will help you through the Commission Association.
Thank you very much. Well spoken. Now, next is Mr. Donald Todd.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Financial questions for the Rutherford County Commissioners. Under the stipulations of a federal law, Title 18, Part 1, Chapter 31, Section 641, 643, 644, 648, and 650, it is illegal for anyone to use public money for private gain. Under the provisions of a recent Tennessee statute, Title 5, Chapter 8, and Section 301, it is authorized for counties to invest county idle funds or county surplus revenue funds in banks and savings and loan associations, apparently for the financial gain of these institutions. Rutherford County is currently investing surplus revenue funds in CDs and in a money market account in several financial institutions who, in turn, use our county's money to expand private loan businesses of these financial institutions. Why do Rutherford County's 21 commissioners permit their appointed investment committee to follow the above-mentioned Tennessee statute regarding the use of this type of public money when this state law appears to be in complete violation of the above-mentioned federal law? This federal law calls it a crime to use public money for private gain. Commissioners, you need to determine if metro's socialistic agencies, like the Tennessee Municipal League, are recommending these investments which benefit only the bankers when the taxpayer's surplus revenue is used for investment purposes instead of using it to eliminate shortfalls in the next year's budget. Two tragic things will happen, both of which will be detrimental to the life of a taxpayer. Number one, unconstitutionally, the taxpayer will lose his citizen's self-rule power to have control over his own surplus revenue because the bankers will have taken over that control. Number two, and losing that constitutional control, the citizens are unnecessarily powerless to influence the commission to use this money to prevent the county from raising taxes because the money is not available to eliminate the shortfalls in the next year's budget. Could this be intentional? Indeed, it has always been characteristic for metro agencies like the Tennessee Municipal League to promote socialistic policies that destroy the taxpayers' citizen's self-rule rights. Commissioners, don't you think that it is time for our county to stop taking orders from the Tennessee Municipal League? Thank you.
Thank you. We will now start with elections and confirmations, and we'll call on Commissioner Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, on your desk, you will find a list of notary candidates, and I would move for their election.
And a second, Commissioner Jernigan. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Second, we need to fill a citizen vacancy on the Emergency Communication District Board. Steering nominates Mr. John Hood, and I move, Mr. Chair.
And we have a second from Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion or questions? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Third, we need to fill an alternate position on the Equalization Board. Steering nominates Mr. John Barbie, and I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Farley. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Announce six vacancies on the Board of Health. We need to announce three vacancies on the Lineball Library Board, and to announce a vacancy on the Stones River Regional Library Board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooch. Okay, there's not any unfinished business there. Then, we will start with reports by the standing committees. There's not a report tonight from the Purchasing Committee, and Mrs. Ely will start even, what does that clock say? Mine does not say 6:30 yet. 6:24. Okay, we're gonna give you five minutes to start with the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee report.
Item K2A, the General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Pet adoption and wellness services, increased revenue from contributions and gifts, $625. Increased expenditures for drugs and medical supplies, $625. Increased revenue from contributions and gifts, $871. Increased expenditures for other supplies and materials, $871. Increased expenditure for gasoline, $7,000, and decreased expenditures for gasoline, $7,000. From Juvenile Court, we have a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $15,275, and increased expenditures for deputy, $2,720 with related benefits, and other contracted services, $12,000. This is to fund accrued leave of an employee who is leaving our employment, and also to fund contracted services for a magistrate. From the Sheriff's Department, decreased expenditures, maintenance and repair of vehicles, $45,000. Increased expenditures, contract with private agencies, $7,000. Motor vehicles, $25,000, and food prep supplies, $13,000. Increased revenue from sale of equipment, $28,255. Increased expenditures, motor vehicles, $28,255. Increased expenditures, maintenance and repair of buildings, $46,198. Decreased to unassigned fund balance, $46,198. This is the result of an electrical issue. Increased revenue, sale of materials and supplies, $396. Increased expenditures for office supplies, $167. Other materials and supplies, $229. Increased revenue from sale of recyclable materials, $636. Increased expenditures for other materials and supplies, $636. Increased revenue from contributions and gifts, $470. Increased expenditures, other charges, $450. Other materials and supplies, $20. Increased revenue, contributions and gifts, $2,550. Increased expenditures in service training, $1,050, and for equipment, $1,550. Excuse me, $1,500. Emergency management. Increased expenditures for other contracted services, $11,600. Decreased expenditures for engineering services, $9,850, and diesel fuel, $1,750. This is to fund road repairs for the Lynch Hill Tower. From emergency management, increased revenue for a Homeland Security Grant, $36,000, and increased expenditures for other equipment, $36,000. Fire and rescue, increased expenditures, diesel fuel, $5,500, gasoline, $1,300. Decreased expenditure, $6,800. From the property assessor, assessor to increase expenditures for other contracted services, $22,000. To appraisal, a decrease in expenditures, other contracted services, $22,000. From finance, increased expenditures for changes in coverage to insurance, from chancery, $1,600. From the workhouse, $4,500. So, a decrease expenditures for employee and dependent insurance of $6,100. And from finance, an increased expenditures for legal services, $20,000, with a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $20,000. Resolve this 15th day of May, 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion or questions on any of those? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
And record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Ms. Ely, I think we will stop there just for a moment and have the public hearings that we have scheduled. All right, so we have two public hearings. The first one is a rezoning request, 14-A-002, Mr. Jamie Reed for Park Trust Development. The request is located along Thompson Road. Existing zoning is residential medium density, and the proposed zoning is planned unit development on a site of approximately 33 acres, and Mr. Demossi may close this in more detail.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. This piece of property is located along Thompson Road, adjacent to the existing Pinnacle Hills subdivision. The applicant's proposing to rezone approximately 34 acres to planned unit development to allow for a total of 95 lots, which represents a 30-lot difference from the area that was originally approved of 65. Now, that being said, there is an area in your pattern book, you'll see it labels, it's outside of the planned development, but it's labeled "Future RM." They have decided, the applicant has decided not to develop that area after all, just because of some difficulties with the property, which actually reduces that lot yield about 35, so the actual lot yield of the subdivision is actually a little bit less than what it was originally. They're proposing to dedicate some of the area to open space, six acres of the PUD that was not included in the original plans of the subdivision as well. House sizes will range from 1,400 to about 2,500 square feet, which is consistent with the existing restrictive covenants for that subdivision. The average lot size will be about 7,200 square feet. There is more detail regarding the building materials and that kind of thing in your pattern book. Again, that's part of the agenda package we sent, and it's in your iPads. There was a neighborhood meeting held on this in January of this year to allow some of the surrounding neighbors to review the proposal. The applicant had to make a couple concessions based on the outcome of that meeting, which, again, were included in your pattern book. There was also an additional meeting held with Consolidated Utility District regarding the lot width and size, and the impact it could have on the step system, septic tank locations. Because of that, the original amendment, or the original proposal, was to have 20-foot setbacks for the front. However, based on that meeting, they have pushed that back to 35 feet, so that was acceptable to CUD, and has been included in your packages as well. Most of the discussion at the Planning Commission really concerned their covenants of the existing subdivision. Despite the smaller lot sizes, the applicant does propose, again, to use the same covenants in effect for the existing subdivision. After discussion, ultimately, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by unanimous vote. Mr. Jamie Reed, representing the applicant, is present, and Mr. Bob Parks is present as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Want to have any questions of Mr. Demossi before we have the public hearing? All right, there being no questions for you, Mr. Demossi. We will declare the public hearing open and available for anyone that wishes to come forward and speak for or against this proposal. Now is your opportunity. We have one gentleman raising his hand, so come forward, please. Give us your name and address, and make your comments.
Hi, my name is Steve Alford, and I live at 1102 Pinnacle Hills Drive. Moved in in last September, and if any of these members here were present at the last meeting that this was brought up, I got a little emotional. This has hit very hard, very home to me. I live in Lot 59, which borders the section that is under application for rezoning. I brought up the question about the neighborhood regulations regarding the size of the houses. I have since gone into the paperwork that I received during my building and application process, and I show a page that shows that 1,650 square feet is the minimum. This is the only information that I received, so the one thing that I do want to verify, if that is possible here in this forum, is to verify that that has been checked, that 1,400 is allowed in that neighborhood. I believe the original proposal was at 1,700 square feet, and I didn't have a problem with that. I didn't agree with it. I wish it could stay afield behind me, not have anybody, but I know that's not going to happen. This area is going to be developed, there's going to be houses there. I make the request that, you know, this information be verified before the final approval is given, just to make sure that any house that is built in this area would not be immediately subject to fines put down by the homeowners association. I believe it's $15 a day, and I don't think anybody building a house is going to want to pay an extra $15 a day because their house may not meet the statutes of the homeowners association. I do have the original plans as it was put in. When I bought my house, I received a printout of the neighborhood that has the original. I don't know if you have the original plans in there. We're looking at probably about a one-to-one lot size, at least on the properties that border the existing houses that have been built. I didn't have a problem with that either, but I just want to make sure that all that information is out. I do want to say that, and I did bring it up in the last meeting, I was not informed of the meeting on January 29th, did not know anything about it, and did not really start receiving the information from the Planning Commission till either right before or right after that meeting was held. So I was not aware of the meeting. I did go out and canvass the neighborhood before the original meeting. I know a lot of my neighbors can't be here because they have families. They, you know, they're cooking dinner, they've got a couple of kids, and unfortunately, it doesn't look like all of them could be here, but we do have some here. I believe the people that are here will express their concerns, as well as my concerns, about this proposal.
All right, thank you, Mr. Alford. Now, this is not a question and answer. It would be an opportunity for anyone else that wishes to speak, including the applicant, to address these questions if they so feel that they choose to. Now, so is that all you have to say?
That's all I have to say.
Okay, so thank you, and it'll be up to the next person to speak, whoever that might be. Tell us your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jamie Reed with SEC. I'm the engineer on the project, and I'm not sure which document he was looking at, but I've got a recorded document of the covenant and restrictions that show 1,400 square feet, so it is currently 1,400 square foot is the minimum on the lots, and that's what we're proposing, the same amount. And we're actually, like Doug reiterated, I'm not going to go reiterate everything that they said, we're actually five lots less than what was on the current restrictions with 17% open space now. So we're not adding more traffic, stuff like that. We're actually, the lots are, same-sized houses are going to be built on these lots, same covenant restrictions. They're going to have side and the front yards, two-car garage. What come out of the meeting were, some of the people that showed up, was the adjacent property owner there along Thompson Road wanted his common property line screened with evergreens, so we're screening those with evergreens, 12-foot centers, and that we made a concession that the houses alone, Silas Drive be the same as Pinnacle Hills Drive. All the homes on lots 1 through 9, 87 through 95, shall be constructed solely of brick and/or stone siding. The remaining lots will comply with the current covenant restrictions that are in place now. Any questions, feel free to ask.
Mr. Farley.
Jamie, so what you're saying is that the only difference between this application and the previous application that was approved is just the number of lots, the yield.
Yeah, the size of the lots and the number. There's five less lots and open space now, and the same covenant, same exact covenants
While he's looking at that, Jamie, the original square footage was what he's reading. It has been amended since the start of the original subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
But that was amended some time ago.
Yeah, whatever, if it was.
Several years ago now.
But what's current?
So there was a 1,600-foot at one point in time.
Yeah, one point in time could, I don't know when this, this is the current, what people are building out there right now.
But just to avoid the confusion, at some time in the last five or six years, it has come through and been amended to make it smaller house size, and that's already done.
That's already, that's a done deal.
All right, any other questions or any other comments, Mr. Reed? All right, if there are no other comments or questions, are there anyone else that wishes to speak? Does anyone else wish to speak to this application, for or against? If there's no one else coming forward, then we're going to declare the public hearing closed, and Mr. Farley?
I'd like to ask Mr. Demossi a question to clear something that was spoke of a while ago.
Mr. Demossi.
Well, the gentleman spoke before Jamie. He had said something about not receiving notification of the public hearings and stuff. Do you know for sure if?
Well, from what I heard him say, he didn't get the information about the neighborhood meeting. Now, that was a meeting that was done by the developer, not by, we didn't send that notice out. Now, I think they used the same list that we sent out, but I thought I heard him say that they started getting information after that meeting, which probably would have been our mailouts that we did send out. So we followed our normal notification protocols for all that.
500 feet and all that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the request with the conditions set forth by the Planning Commission.
Second, Commissioner Phillips. Any question or discussion? Commissioner Sandlin.
One question there on the amendment, Dale, whenever it's amended in the subdivision regulations, does that come back through planning or anything, or can this, the developer go up there and amend and say, hey, we're going to build 1,200-square-foot houses instead of 24,000-square-foot houses?
Well, that was, yes, sir, that was with the restrictive covenants. Now, when it was originally approved, the subdivision was not a planned development, it was just a straight, at the time, R15 subdivision, so that's really outside of the Planning Commission's purview, so whatever their covenants allowed them to do as far as amendments, I assume they would have followed that, but we wouldn't have gotten involved in it from the county side.
Okay, any other questions? All right, then, we have a motion and a second to approve this rezoning request, subject to the conditions as outlined from the Planning Commission. If there's no other discussion, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Those opposed? Let the record reflect that it was unanimous. Now, the second agenda item for public hearing is a zoning ordinance amendment, and this is a request by our planning staff regarding childcare centers as accessory uses with community assembly uses. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mayor Bridges, thank you. This request that we're bringing before you tonight is consistent with the work schedule that staff provided to the Planning Commission at the beginning of this year. Childcare centers are defined in our zoning ordinance as establishments that provide care for 13 or more pre-teenage children in any kind of building. They're classified as general personal services and are allowed in the office professional zone, all the commercial, industrial, and also the special character area zones. However, they're not permitted by right or even special exception in the residential zones. Now, community assembly uses, which typically include religious facilities, churches, those kind of things, frequently have childcare centers on-site, I know of a few in the county that do. With the vast majority of those being in residential zones, however, the zoning ordinance would not allow them to begin operation of a childcare center if they desired to do so. Now, staff's intent was not to prohibit that when we came up with the new ordinance that was adopted in 2012 and became effective at the beginning of last year. As a matter of fact, we added a provision to the zoning ordinance back in May of last year that allowed a parents' day out program for churches as an accessory use, but it does, the ordinance still remains silent on daycare centers or childcare centers, as we classify them. So generally speaking, though, very few modifications are required when a church wants to use a part of their facility as a childcare center. Typically, the required parking facilities are present. Also, the buildings and all the other things typically fall under the State Fire Marshal's Office as well, which also inspect childcare centers. So a lot of the times, those improvements are already in place, so it's a pretty easy transition between them. When we brought these amendments to the Planning Commission, really, the largest point of discussion was on whether or not we should allow them by right or by special exception. Now, after a lot of discussion, we did some research into what other communities around here did. We kind of saw a split. Some of them did allow it by right, some did recommend that it had to be by special exception or special use permit, however the term would be. Ultimately, after discussion, the Planning Commission felt more comfortable recommending to you that while they would like to see the childcare centers be allowed with community assembly uses, they'd like to see it done by a special exception through the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that is what is brought to you today, and I just want to go through quickly the amendments that we have. Essentially, what we would do is add a new provision to Section 1103, which are the use-specific standards. This would apply to childcare centers in any district, whether they be residential and approved by special exception, or if they're allowed by right in the commercial zones. And you see, there's just a few standards there. They'd have to have an area on-site and off-street to load and unload passengers. They'd have to be able to exit the property without having to back onto the street. They have to demonstrate that adequate wastewater capacity exists due to serve the proposed use, and also, all regulations for childcare facilities enforced through other agencies. And you'll see on your staff comments that you've got there, it says, limited, but not limited to, the Tennessee Department of Human Services must be met. At Public Works last week, Commissioner Farley, I know, brought up some concern that he had that although this is, was meant to be broad, to say, you know, including but not limited to just this one agency, he wanted to make sure that it was clear to anybody who wanted to do a daycare that they would have to go through the Tennessee State Fire Marshal's Office. So while it's not reflected on this, we did make that change in the resolution, so if this is approved, that will be part of the amendment that you will be approving. Additional amendments on the last page, go through Chapters 4 through 8. I won't go through every one of those because it's really the same thing. This would, this has added language to the accessory uses in those different districts. Chapter 4 is residential, 5, office, 6, commercial, on and on, which basically just allows them by special exception. So if there's any other questions on that, I'll be happy to answer them at this time. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this by unanimous vote.
Any questions now at this time from Mr. Demossi? Commissioner P.
Will any of the facilities that are currently doing this be grandfathered in, or will they all have to come for the board?
They would be grandfathered, yes, sir. The ones that are currently in operation, they wouldn't have to do anything else.
Other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Then we will declare the public hearing open. For anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this request on the zoning ordinance amendments regarding childcare centers, please come forward and give us your name and address, and make your statements. Is anyone here that wishes to speak regarding this amendment? I don't think anyone is here that wishes to speak, therefore, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion? Motion approved, Commissioner Jeff Phillips and Second Commissioner Farley. Now, any further discussion? Then, there being none, all of you in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, let the record reflect that was unanimous. Thank you, sir, and we're ready for Commissioner Ely to continue our Budget, Finance, and
Item K2B, a special purpose fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the special purpose fund be amended as follows. From the Sheriff's Department, increased revenue, asset forfeiture, $6,011; increased expenditures for other equipment, $6,011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item K2C, a drug fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the drug fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Department, increased revenue, sale of equipment, $92,095; increased expenditures for law enforcement equipment, $92,095. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Serino. Any questions or discussions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, motion passes.
Item K2D, general purpose school fund budget amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended according to the schedules attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as set forth herein at length verbatim. The First Amendment is concerning career ladder and extended contract. To amend the general purpose school fund budget by reducing $145,654 in state revenues for the career ladder and extended contract programs, and reducing budgeted expenditures by the same, $145,654. The Second Amendment is certified staff to amend the general purpose school fund budget by a total of $429,284 in already budgeted teacher pay. by a total of $429,284 in already budgeted teacher pay, $391,265, and related benefits of $38,019. Medical and life insurance to amend the general purpose school fund budget by a total of $270,665 in already budgeted employee medical insurance and life insurance expenditures. Miscellaneous revenues to amend miscellaneous revenue accounts in the general purpose school fund budget by a net increase of $118,461 as presented, and to amend the related $118,461 in related expenditures. Donations to amend donations and contributions revenues by $92,505, and adds $92,505 in related expenditures, and to amend $16,720 in materials and supplies from the coordinated school health budget to health equipment. Adult education to amend adult education revenues between state, a decrease of $27,515, and federal funds, an increase of $34,042, and budgets the expenditures for additional $6,527 in federal funds awarded to the system. Classified staff to amend the general purpose school fund budget by a total of $252,68 in already budgeted classified staff pay, $209,965, and related benefits of $42,103. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Cook there. Any discussion or questions? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, zero abstain. Motion passes. Mr. Chairman, please note that Commissioner McAdoo has blown his green light bulb, and his vote is being properly recorded, although it is not indicated for those who are present.
Thank you.
Item K-2E, Education Capital Projects Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Education Capital Projects Fund be amended according to the schedules attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim. To amend the Capital Projects Fund by moving $41,520 from account 34685, committed for capital projects, in order to fund the balance of $93,270, chiller replacement at Blackman Elementary School. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Thank you. And a second from Commissioner Sandlin. Any questions on that? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes. Motion passes.
Item K-2F, the 2014-15 Stop Loss Insurance Renewal. Whereas the current stop-loss coverage on Rutherford County's medical plan is $750,000 per covered member, and whereas Cigna has proposed to renew the stop-loss coverage at the same pooling level with the monthly rate increasing from $5.95 per employee to $6.55 per employee, for a total annual premium of $396,851. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute all required documents for and on behalf of Rutherford County to renew the stop-loss coverage on Rutherford County's medical plan with the pooling level to remain the same at $750,000 per covered member, with a monthly rate of $6.55 per employee, and a total annual premium of $396,851, effective July 1, 2014. Resolve this 15th day of May 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any questions on this? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes. Motion passes.
Item K-2G, the 2014-15 Property Casualty and Crime Coverage Renewal. Whereas CCMSI has negotiated renewals with Travelers as the carrier for Rutherford County's property and inland marine insurance coverage for an annual premium of $45,439. And whereas CCMSI has negotiated renewals with Brit Global as the carrier for Rutherford County's casualty, liability, and crime insurance coverage with an annual premium of $628,000. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute all required documents, renewing the property, inland marine, crime, and casualty insurance coverage with Travelers and Brit Global through CCMSI as the broker and third-party administrator, effective July 1, 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner P. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes. Motion passes.
Item K-2H, Acceptance of the GHSO Alcohol Enforcement Grant Amendment and a Related Budget Amendment for the Sheriff's Department. Whereas Rutherford County has received notification of a grant amendment from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the GHSO alcohol enforcement grant. Whereas the amendment is in the amount of $100,000 and covers the performance period of March 10, 2014 through September 30, 2014. Whereas the award is for overtime pay and related benefits with no county match. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to sign the grant amendment documents with the Tennessee Department of Transportation to accept the amendment to the GHSO alcohol enforcement grant in the amount of $100,000. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to reflect the revenues and expenditures of the grant. Increased revenue, other federal through state, $99,860. Increased expenditure, overtime pay, $83,000, and all the related benefits. Resolve this 15th day of May 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second from Commissioner Schaefer. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes. Motion passes.
Item K-2I, Approval of a Contract with Middle Tennessee State University for the Health Department. Whereas the Rutherford County Health Department previously received funding from the Tennessee Department of Health to implement a smoking cessation program for pregnant women, and whereas the Rutherford County Health Department desires to enter into an agreement with Middle Tennessee State University to administer the program known as Smart Moms. Whereas this agreement has a projected cost of $62,506, which is to be paid from the funding provided by the Tennessee Department of Health. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute the agreement with Middle Tennessee State University, a copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim, to administer the Smart Moms program. Resolve this 15th day of May 2014. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jeff Phillips, second. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes. Motion passes.
Item K-2J, Employee Services Agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health. Whereas Rutherford County desires to enter into an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health for the provision of employee services in the amount of $8,254. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Health in the amount of $8,254 for the provision of employee services for the period of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 15th day of May 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Schaefer. Any questions on that? All right. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes. Motion passes.
Item K-2K, a Grant Contract with the Tennessee Department of Health. Whereas Rutherford County desires to enter into a contract agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health for the provision of local health services in the amount of $2,140,900, which is a no-cost contract to Rutherford County, with said costs being reimbursed dollar for dollar. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement, a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Health in the amount of $2,140,900 for the provision of local health services, commencing on July 1, 2014, ending on June 30, 2015. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes. Motion passes.
Item K-2L, a Contract with Health Connect America for Juvenile Court Youth Services. Whereas the Rutherford County Juvenile Court previously received a grant from the Tennessee Department of Children's Services to provide community intervention services, and whereas the Rutherford County Juvenile Court desires to enter into an agreement with Health Connect America to administer the program known as Teen Trax. And whereas the agreement has a cost of $46,448, which is to be paid from the pass-through grant from the Tennessee Department of Children's Services. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute the agreement with Health Connect America. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim, to administer the Teen Trax program. Resolve this 15th day of May 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Jordan, in a second. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes. Motion passes.
Commissioners, item K-2M, we do not have a contract to present, so I'll move right on to K-2N. Acceptance of 2013 Homeland Security Grant and Related Budget Amendment for Emergency Management. Whereas Rutherford County has received a grant in the amount of $140,196 for the 2013 Homeland Security Grant Program for the provision of pass-through funding provided by the United States Department of Homeland Security. And whereas the grant is 100% federally funded and is effective for the period beginning September 1, 2013, ending April 30, 2015. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents with the State of Tennessee Department of Military Tennessee Emergency Management Agency to accept the 2013 Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $140,196. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows to recognize the proceeds from the grant and to appropriate said proceeds for other equipment. Emergency management, increased revenue, Homeland Security, $140,196, increased expenditures for other equipment, $140,196. Resolve this 15th day of May 2014. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Sandlin. Any questions regarding that? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, on M, where it was the credit card thing for the farmer's market out there, went through the Ag Board, was there some holdup on the contract there that wasn't?
There was some language in there that we could not get worked out with those people that wanted to provide that service, that, so it's yet a pending matter.
I just didn't want to hold them up out there on the farmer's market.
We didn't either, but so we allowed them to come forward with it, but they have not worked it out by this meeting tonight.
Mr. Mayor, is, I don't guess there's any way for us to do anything, you know, to relieve the pressure on that if that does get approved, you know, something to, you know, you and the trustees, you know, satisfaction, because they're going to be out there another month at the farmer's market without being able to handle those processors, EBT cards, and a whole lot of people are using those. I mean.
I think there was a small matter, but these providers did not want to remove the language that said we would indemnify them from liability. Mr. Coke may can address that a bit better than I can, so you may want to pass a motion that would allow, with the review of our county attorney and our trustee, to allow us to execute that if we can get a document that's acceptable in a legal form. What would your take on that be, Mr. Coke?
Yes, the issue that came up in the contract is that the processors have in their language that says that the county will agree to indemnify and hold those processors harmless from any liability of claims that arise out of the processing of those cards. Those could be any types of claims. Tennessee law specifically provides that a county, or for that matter, any governmental entity cannot, as a matter of public policy, indemnify and hold harmless a third party. And the reason that is, is because it, in effect, pledges the unlimited resources or financial capacity of a county to an unidentifiable obligation. Attorney General's issued an opinion on that, saying you just, that would not be legally permissible for a governmental entity to do that. So, we've contacted back the credit card processors and said, you know, can you remove this language? Well, if you know anything about credit card companies, it's kind of like dealing with the federal government. They, they're dealing with multiple banks that issue these cards, and they say, well, we can't take this language out. We'd have to go back to every bank that issues a card and have them pull it. And so, we're in kind of a catch-22 that they say they don't want to remove the language, and I can't give you an opinion that it's legal to do that with that language in there for the reasons I've just expressed. Now, having said that, you know, you could, you could direct the county to go ahead and enter the contract with that language in there, notwithstanding my opinion. I just can't tell you that it's a legal contract. I'm not going to do that. But, so that's where we are on the processing.
Well, I'm proud you're looking into it, and that's what we're doing. I know through the auction business, you know, we got to be very careful because they can, if the person buys the item, they can have their bank take the money back out. And they've bought it, whether it's cracked or broken, you know, they bought it, you know, and, or they broke it afterwards or whatever. So, I want to make sure the language is right, but we'll, I mean, are they still using the old card situation now where they're not, they're not, they don't have anything at all right now?
I think they're out of the card business completely right now, but last year, the state handled that.
That's right.
Apparently, the state broke their own law, and they probably signed in that exact contract, but.
This Attorney General's opinion deals with local governments. Yeah, it specifically deals with counties and municipalities. It may be that the state says, if we want to break the bank on these, we will. Obviously, they're not, but I don't know that the opinion applies to the state.
Well, it's probably not going to be fixed before next month if you're having to go through all of that, but I'm willing to allow the county attorney and the mayor to handle it. Yeah, I'll put that in form of a motion. If y'all, it does go through sooner, then y'all can expedite it and get it going out there so we don't lose revenue on it.
I'll second that. And. I'll second that, and just come back to us next month if something does, and report back, you know.
And include in that motion the trustee, because they are our banker, so they need to take the lead. But trustee, with the advice of the county attorney, we'd be allowed to execute those agreements.
There are a lot of people that get the EBT cards, and it was a great success last year. They're over there buying fresh vegetables instead of out buying something else, you know, that's not as healthy for them, it's supported. It was a win-win situation, so hopefully we can just work it out before they're too far into the season.
All right, so you've got a motion and a second, and you've heard to allow us to execute a document if we can get it in appropriate form. Is there any other discussion? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. There's not a report from our Health and Education Committee. We do have one resolution from our Property Management Committee, Mr. McAdoo.
We've got one resolution tonight coming from Property Management, and it relates to the emergency medical building that we just purchased. Resolution, whereas attached is an abbreviated form of agreement between owner and architect between Rutherford County, Tennessee, and Klein Sweeney Associates, providing for renovation of the Pace Building for the Rutherford County Emergency Medical Services. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said agreement form of agreement between owner and architect. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be in, they hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee. The attached abbreviated form of agreement between owner and architect with Klein, Sweeney and Associates, resolve this 15th day of November, 15th day of May, 2014, and I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Coggan. Any questions regarding this, Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request that the rest of our votes tonight be my recorded vote.
So addressed, we will do that. So we have a motion, a second on this particular resolution, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Next, Public Safety Committee has one resolution, Commissioner Farley.
Got a resolution here tonight approving the inter-local agreement between the city of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County, Tennessee. The 2014 Byrne Justice Assistance Grant, better known as the JAG Program Award. Whereas the city of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County have been informed by the Department of Justice of their eligibility to receive a joint award of $67,090 from a federal grant program called the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG. With the city of Murfreesboro to receive $33,545, and Rutherford County to receive the same amount of $33,545. Whereas to receive the award, the program requires that the application be filed jointly between the county and the city, and an inter-local agreement be executed between the two entities agreeing upon the amount of funds which is to receive, and which agency will file the application on behalf of both entities. And whereas it is being proposed that the city of Murfreesboro be designated as a physical agent to file the application on behalf of both entities, request the drawdown of funds and pass the agreed-upon portion of the funds on to Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials be, and they are hereby authorized, to enter into the inter-local agreement with the city of Murfreesboro. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein as reference as set forth herein at length verbatim, designating the city of Murfreesboro as a physical agent to apply for the 2014 Byrne Justice Assistance Grant on behalf of Rutherford County, and with the share being $33,545 applied to the city of Murfreesboro, and Rutherford County to receive the sum of $33,545 additionally, that the county mayor also be authorized to accept the grant subject to it being awarded. Resolve this 15th day of May, 2014, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Schaefer, second. Did anyone have any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, motion passes.
Right next on Public Works and Planning, we have two resolutions. Commissioner Jurnigan.
Public Works and Planning Committee has two resolutions. The first resolution is to approve Stormwater Management Orders update. The second would be a resolution to make design on county maps, the name Bushnell Cave, Creek, from Bushnell Cave and Creek. Whereas pursuant to the federal mandate to comply with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, permute application regulations, stormwater discharge, Rutherford County is required to adopt a stormwater management ordinance. Whereas Rutherford County, Tennessee originally adopted stormwater management ordinance December 16, 2004. And whereas amendments was adopted June 17, 2010, and December 13, 2012. Whereas the attached stormwater management ordinance, a copy of said same being attached here is Exhibit 1, incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, contains additional revisions required by overseeing authorities. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to approve said ordinance. And therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Rutherford County hereby adopt the stormwater management ordinance as amended, attached here, and resolve this 15th day of May, 2014, I so move.
And a second, Commissioner Farley. Any questions or discussions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Eighteen yes, one abstained, motion passes.
And resolution, whereas the Rutherford County Historical Society has requested the Bushman's Cave and Creek be restored to the historical correct name of Bushnell Cave and Creek, advising embassy Bushnell, a Revolutionary War captain, was an aggressive purchaser of North Carolina land grants in the late 1770, and one time controlled over 10,000 acres in what is now today the north and eastern section of Rutherford County. And whereas proximated to the Bushnell Holins was a cave from which flowed a remarkable large cave spring feeding a stream that joined the east fork upstream from today's Walter Hill Community. According to early land records, 19th century maps, the cave was named for Bushnell and the stream was named Bushnell Creek. And whereas it appears the Union photograph during the Civil War may have mistakenly identified this east fork tribulation as Bushman's Creek. This much more appearance on the 1878 years map and now appears on numerous area maps, although the Bushnell name remains in state record. And therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to restore the historical correct name of Bushnell Cave and Creek to the official county map and to replace the bridge signs on Compton Road and Last Castle Pike, according to the Rutherford County Highway Department and consultant with the Tennessee Department of Transportation and the county mayor to determine the installation and sources of funds for the replacement of bridge signs. Resolve this 15th day of May, 2014, I so move.
Second Commissioner Phillips and others. Any questions on this regarding this? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Right now, we will call on Mr. Coggan for the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you have one resolution before you. This is more of a housekeeping resolution regarding the privilege tax on litigation in all civil and criminal cases to be levied in an amount not to exceed $25 per case to be used exclusively for courthouse security. You have a copy of the resolution on your iPads, and, Mr. Chairman, I ask for that resolution be entered into the record, and I move for its approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Questions?
Isn't that a chief, doesn't he have to read the whole?
It would be my pleasure if that's what you desire.
You may request that, and he will have to, but he said with your pleasure he will not. Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Is there any other business that you wish to bring before this body? Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, good evening. Just a couple of items, small ones but important ones. The Health and Education Committee, along with the Budget Committee and the School Board, will hold our joint meeting at the School Board offices, just like we always do, on the date this year is May 27. Of course, everyone is welcome, as well as the general public. I call it to your attention for one other reason. That meeting will be at 4:30, not the usual 5:30, but 4:30 on May 27. As you noticed when you came in this evening, Mr. Sandvig, or Mr. Oden, brought us the School Board of Budget, which is right up to date through their meeting last night. I suggest that you bring this with you and give it all the due attention between now and then, paying particular attention to the first seven pages, the cover letter, and the additions and subtractions from last year's budget and so forth. I think it's easy to read, and I think, I think you'll find it quite helpful in our discussion on the 27th. Again, 4:30. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Commissioner P.
Wanted to mention that this Saturday, May 17, from 6:00 to 10:00, Ketchum will be having a country hand breakfast. Please come out in a ten.
Commissioner Gooch.
Mr. Chairman, I'm proud to announce that my fourth grandchild was born Monday night, Jada Marie Harrison, weighing in at eight pounds, 12 ounces. Or was it 12 pounds? Anyway, she got 10 fingers and 10 toes.
Well, congratulations, thank you. Commissioner Turner?
Wait. I just want to make sure that commissioners and our citizens know that Smyrna is hosting the Great Tennessee Air Show again on June 13 and 14, that weekend. Is that right? 13th and 14th? There's a 14th and 15th. And then Commissioner Allen's going to keep feeding me info because I'm not bright enough to remember all of it at once. And then the night before that, on Friday night.
There's a celebration at the Depot.
The celebration at the Depot in downtown Smyrna with the, say that again. How about I just, how about I just let Commissioner Allen handle this? She's much more focused on it than I am, apparently.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen.
We are in the process of revitalizing downtown Smyrna. The first phase is going to be open to the public on Friday night, June 13. It's a celebration where we've added restrooms to that area where the depot is, the historic depot. It'll be available to be rented as an event facility across the street from that. The Smyrna Assembly Hall has also been renovated, and it's going to be available for rental space as well. And then, it's actually a huge music festival, so it's more than just a celebration. The ribbon cutting's at 5 o'clock. There are five different stages with bands going on all night, and vendors, and food. It's going to be awesome. And then the next morning is our very first farmer's market at the depot. And so we're going to have those every two weeks during June, I'm sorry, June and July, and then if they go really well, then we'll have them every week. And I'm sure Commissioner Turner would have said all that just as well.
Lots of opportunities in our county for many good events, so thank you very much. Anyone else have any business they wish to bring before this body? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.